Thursday, August twenty eighth. We are going to open the planning board hearing. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants that wish to speak must raise their hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. Note that this meeting is being recorded for live broadcast and televised replay by Born TV. If anyone is audio or visual recording, please acknowledge at this time.
Yeah, I'm recording.
Thank you. To join the Zoom meeting, the meeting ID is eight nine zero two seven seven two eight eight three seven. The passcode is two two zero six one zero. And there is a dial in number of nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. First agenda is the meeting minutes from August fourteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Doc. Any questions, comments, deliberations to those? We take a roll call vote. Catherine?
I wasn't here, so.
Abstain. Chris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Abstain.
I guess Doc?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Next up on the agenda. Presentation and discussion on amendments to the zoning bylaw for the October twentieth, two thousand twenty five special town meeting for multifamily housing, section three A, in the downtown district. Will Radigan, MBTA Communities Engagement Manager from Citizens Housing and Planning Association, will be giving us a presentation.
All right. Hi, everyone. Sounds like I'm up, so thank you so much for having me. Before we get started, I want to confirm, can you all see and hear me clearly in the room?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you so much. So I'm gonna just go ahead and share my screen so I can load my presentation for you all, and then I'll get started. Okay. Can everyone see my presentation clearly in the room?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. All right, so thank you so much again for having me. Really appreciate the opportunity to present. A lot of you saw me present on Tuesday night. I think maybe about half the planning board or more. So a lot of this information might not be new for all of you, but it sounds like there are a few planning board members who didn't see my presentation on Tuesday and maybe some members of the public. So I'm gonna present a lot of similar information to what I did Tuesday night, but hopefully add a bit more context, a bit more information if we have some more time available. So to start from the beginning, my name is Will Radigan. I work for an organization called the Citizens Housing and Planning Association, or CHAPA. We're a statewide nonprofit that works to make housing more affordable in Massachusetts through research, advocacy, education, and connecting individuals and families with affordable homeownership opportunities. My role with CHAPA is working with local communities to educate them on the housing policy options available to them and how it will meet the needs of their own communities. And for most of the last two years or so, that has meant homes exclusively working with communities on their plans to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. Because this law impacts about half the communities in the state, it's really been at the top of the list for all things housing policy recently. So what I'm gonna do today is give an overview of what the law is, where it came from, and why it was passed, what some of their common concerns are, and how you might think about responding to them, and then talk about some next steps going forward. One thing I want to emphasize is that while my organization believes in making housing more affordable in Massachusetts and thinks this law is part of that solution, I'm not here to tell you what to do in response to this law or how to go about in creating your plan. Simply here to provide information, so I will do my best to provide that information, and if you have questions at the end, I'm very happy to talk through anything that I presented. So I want to start with the basics of the law. And a lot of you probably have been hearing this about this law for the last two years or so, but because the town has now pretty far along in the process, you have most of your plan in place, I think now is a good time to go back to the basics of what the law is as you go into this final fall season of public engagement heading into coming up. So taking it from the top, the MBTA Communities Act was passed in two thousand twenty by the legislature, signed into law by Governor Charlie Baker in two thousand twenty one, as part of an economic development package. It might seem surprising to some people that this is part of an economic development package, and I'll talk a bit more about why this is economic development in a moment. And what it does very simply is it requires every community that is near the MHA credit system to reform their zoning codes to give some property owners the right to build multifamily housing. And it affects about half of the communities in Massachusetts. What's unique about it is that it enables communities to choose where to allow multifamily housing, which is why you have to go through this fairly complex process, and the goal is really to cut regulation and red tape in local zoning that have made it hard to build middle-class housing. So just a little update on where we are with this law. Again, this law acts one hundred and seventy-seven communities to reform their zoning. At this point, about one hundred and forty communities have already done so. And Born is in the last category of communities that have to go through this process because Born was known as an adjacent small town. So it has the smallest, most modest requirements to comply, and it has a deadline that can end this year. And I like to show this map because sometimes the media covers this law because it's on all, a few towns that haven't complied yet or missed their deadlines. But the big picture is that the vast majority of towns in the state have already been through this process and have already successfully complied with the law. So background on why the law was passed. The simple answer is that it has become, sorry, go back slide. It has become too hard for middle-class people in Massachusetts to find a place to live, whether they're renting or buying. And that's a major problem for our whole postal reasons. And I always like to illustrate this point with some local data, so I just want to go over what affordability looks like in Born right now and why this, there is a need for more affordable housing for middle-class people. So the graph here shows what people can afford to pay in Born at a certain salary and what the average monthly payments are to rent or to buy a home. And when we talk about affordability, we usually consider housing affordable if someone's spending no more than thirty percent of their income on it. So if you're a foreign teacher, first year, your starting salary is fifteen thousand dollars a year. That means you can afford to pay about fourteen hundred and fifty dollars a month. If you're paying more than that, you're probably going to be struggling to pay for groceries, car payments, education, healthcare, et cetera. And your life is going to be pretty difficult. The issue is that while that's what people can afford to pay at a fairly reasonable middle-class salary, the average one-bedroom rent in Massachusetts is now over twenty-four hundred dollars. And the monthly payment, including insurance, taxes, utilities, on a home in Born, which is about six hundred eighty thousand dollars average, is forty-one hundred dollars a month. So more than double what someone with a middle-class teaching job in Born can afford to pay. And that's what this law is trying to solve, this issue of there not being reasonably priced homes for middle-class people to purchase or rent. So I went over that last night. I thought since we have more and more time tonight, I'd go into more detail. So the last slide shows that if you don't own a home or rent already, it's very difficult to find a home here. It's also a major issue for people that already live in Born who are struggling to afford their homes already. So again, if you're cost burden, that means you're spending more than thirty percent of your income on housing. And if you're severely cost burdened, that means you're spending more than fifty percent of your income on housing, which really means you're at risk of losing your home and being adopted. And even for the homeowners in Born, well over twenty-five percent of people are struggling to afford the homes that they're in today. And that issue is only more severe for renters, although we're missing a little data there right here. You can see that a solid fifty percent of renters in Born are facing really high housing prices. And worth keeping in mind that renters are usually paying more of today's market prices because many homeowners bought their homes many years ago when prices were a lot lower. So people trying to rent or buy right now in Massachusetts and even in Born are really struggling to do so. And that's the problem the law is trying to solve. So now I want to get to the economic development piece. The reason why this was included in the economic development bill is that high housing costs have been driving working age people out of Massachusetts. This graph on the screen here is showing net domestic migration rates by age group. And what you can see is that while we're still having college students move to Massachusetts and we're seeing modest declines in people in middle age or over sixty-five, people between twenty-five and forty-four are leaving Massachusetts at an escalating rate. And we don't have to guess why they're doing that. They polled us pretty clearly in the Greater Boston Chamber of Commerce survey. One in four people said they plan to leave Greater Boston in the next five years, and the cost of rent and ability to buy a home were the number one, number three reasons. So working age people are leaving Massachusetts because of high housing prices very significantly. And if we want to continue having a functioning economy, it's a pretty bad bargain to have people in the prime of their lives leave Massachusetts. And again, I'll provide a little more context tonight than I did on Tuesday. This has been a trend that a lot of businesses are noticing, and they're seeing this housing shortage as a major threat to their business model. So in the Small Business Poll in two thousand twenty-four, I believe, sixty-one percent of businesses in Massachusetts have said they have positions proceeding to fill. And sixty-five percent of those business owners say high housing costs are a barrier to filling those positions. Even more of an issue on the other side is that forty-three percent of business owners say fewer customers is a major concern. So when we have working age people leaving the state, that means that our small business owners can't find the people they need to run their businesses. And in some cases, they can't even find the customers that they used to be able to find only a few decades ago. And one thing I might mention here, sometimes people hear this trend of people leaving the state and rising highs in housing costs, and they wonder how that could be. And a lot of that has to do with household size in Massachusetts. So we're still getting more and more households every year. Maybe we have smaller families, so we have aging, aging people who are living here. We have fewer kids, so there might have been a lot of households that had four to six people in the seventies and eighties. We now have a lot more households, and most of them are two to three people, and each one of those occupies a single apartment or a single home, which means there's more, much more demand for home in apartments than there was in the past. So the law was passed because there's this issue of unaffordable housing driving people out of Massachusetts. But the question, of course, is why is housing got so expensive? And the answer is that, like most things in our economy, the price of housing is primarily driven by supply and demand. And on the scrap on the screen, you can see that in the sixties, seventies, and eighties, we used to build a lot more housing than we did in the nineties, pre-crisis of the pandemic. What we essentially did is in dark blue, we built a lot more multifamily housing, duplexes, triple-deckers, townhomes, which tend to naturally be more affordable, and we really stopped them in the nineties, and we have not taken that pace to where it was in the past. And so we've been building less, that's driven prices up, and it's made it more difficult for people to buy homes. One thing I always think is important to acknowledge is that in Born and other coastal communities, seasonal housing and vacation homes certainly add some other dynamics to this market. And I think there's another set of solutions to those issues that I'm happy to talk about if you're interested tonight, but there's no question that statewide and in Born, this issue of limited supply and declining housing production is contributing to rising costs. Again, I need some more context to this. One common concern I often hear about this idea that housing, new housing production will help to stabilize housing costs is that new homes and even new apartments or condos tend to be a lot more expensive than people hope and they would like to be able to pay for themselves. And to explain why new homes and more than than we like do help to stabilize housing costs across the board, I always like to use the analogy of something that has all of a similar pattern in recent years that a lot of us relate to, and that's the used car market. For a long time, we've had new car prices come in the market, and if you didn't have as much money, you could look for the used car market to find something more affordable. But in two thousand twenty, we had this great case study of where during the COVID pandemic, new car production temporarily came to a halt because of supply chain issues and factory shutdowns. And during that time, you can see on the graph here that used car prices absolutely skyrocketed. And that's because all the people that would have been buying new cars in the past were getting bidding wars for older used cars, and the price rocketed up. That's exactly the situation we're in with the housing market in Massachusetts, except it's been going on for thirty years or so. We haven't been building a lot of new homes, so older homes that should be cheaper, should be more affordable to middle-class people, people with a lot of money are getting in bidding wars for them and driving the prices up, leaving very few options for people that are in the middle class. So I talked about why there is a housing shortage in Massachusetts and how that's affecting prices. Now I want to talk about why the MBTA Communities Act, which is asking towns to reform their zoning, is intended to be a solution to that problem. So just to review what zoning is, it's the set of rules that determines how property owners can use their land, including the shape, height, and size of buildings, how far buildings can be apart from each other, and whether land can be used for residential, commercial, industrial, or open space purposes. It's the rulebook for how you can use your land. And right now, we've made it practically illegal to build multifamily housing in most of Massachusetts. Right now, there's only four percent of Massachusetts where property owners have the right to build multifamily housing. It includes four homes or more in a single property. And that pushes out people who can't afford a single-family home, as well as people that want to live in multifamily housing. So zoning isn't the only solution to that housing shortage, but we've made it illegal to build multifamily housing in so many places that we can't begin to tackle all the other things that are necessary to do to build more apartments, condos, duplexes, until we see more zoning reform across the state that actually makes it legal to build. So to review the requirements for Born, again, this law is asking Born to reform its zoning code. And what Born is asked to do by the law in minimum is designate about thirty-seven acres where property owners can have the option to build multifamily housing at densities of at least fifteen homes per acre. Because Born is an adjacent small town and doesn't have its own transit station right now, its multifamily district can be anywhere in town except places that are not developable land, which include publicly, educationally, or institutionally owned land, like all the universities, the town hall, and then wetland resource areas, rivers and streams that aren't developable and conservation land. And the key thing to emphasize here is that although the town is asked to allow multifamily housing, putting a zoning overlay district for multifamily housing in place does not force property owners to change anything in those districts. It simply gives them an additional option for how they can use their private property. So if their single-family home is placed in a multifamily zoning district, they can keep it as a single-family home forever. They now just have the option to add more homes to that property if they choose to do so. So Born is being asked to allow property owners the option to build up to fifteen units per acre. Why are we talking about fifteen units per acre as a number that is helpful for some reason? And the reason for that is that fifteen units per acre is typically about the density of what we call missing middle housing. And missing middle housing is everything between single-family homes on one end and mid-rise, larger apartment buildings on the other. Right now, we have a lot in each of Massachusetts. We have a lot of single-family homes in suburbs, fair amount of apartments in cities, and then we have very little of what's in the middle. And that's the kind of housing that a lot of people want to live in and tends to naturally be more affordable. So what does it actually look like in practice? I always try to pull a couple of local examples. So what fifteen units per acre looks like depends a lot on the size of the lot. So if you have a really small lot like this lot here in Wareham, about a tenth of an acre, it can look like a two-family home. On a slightly larger lot in Plymouth, it can look like a three-family home, and this is a condo development here. On larger lots like a half acre here in Born, it could look like a seven-unit project. And I think this is kind of a typical lot size you might see in a town like Born that's not intense. So I think it's a pretty realistic approximation of what fifteen units per acre can often look like. And then on the larger end, you have almost a full acre in Kingston. This is about fifteen units per acre over twelve units, which is kind of more like a man or house style. But the point with all these examples is that multifamily housing, the kind of it that we're talking about here, is not skyscraper, it's not high-rise apartments. It's really smaller-scale multifamily housing that is pretty typical to what a lot of New England downtowns have already. But the issue is that many towns no longer make it easy for property owners to build this kind of housing that they could in the past. And this kind of reform would make buildings like this possible again. So we talked about what missing middle housing looks like. Now let's talk about who it might be able to serve. Right now, if you are looking for a home in most of Massachusetts, you generally have two realistic options. On one side, if you make less than eighty percent of your area median income, you can qualify for income-restricted subsidized housing. And to do that, you need to make less than seventy-seven thousand dollars a year in Born, and then you can get on a long waiting list and maybe someday qualify for an affordable apartment. On the other end, if you want to build a single-family home or buy one, I should say, you need to be making over a hundred and four thousand dollars a year. But if you're anywhere in the middle, which is where a lot of middle-class salaries tend to be, it's very difficult to find an affordable place to live. So missing middle housing, which is primarily market-rate housing, but is smaller, doesn't take up as much space as single-family homes, it tends to be more affordable and serves the people in there. And it also serves people who, for whatever reason, don't want to live in a single-family home, but want to stay in the same community. Often, people who really benefit from this are seniors downsizing who have lived in a large home, their whole lives, or since they raised kids, and want to stay in the same community but don't want the trouble and expense of managing a large, single-family home. Often, young adults who are just getting their own places really value this kind of housing as well. And another really common trouble is divorced parents who may want to keep their children in the same school district but can't afford a single-family home at one salary. And so an apartment is something that really benefits them. So now that we've gone over the generalities of what this law means, I want to talk a bit more about the nitty-gritty of how we got to this point, because many folks may have heard there have been a couple of legal cases that have challenged this law. Both of them have not made any impact in the law, but I think it's good reviews to head up those questions anyway. So the first case that we saw recently, or a bit of time ago at this point, was Milton versus the Attorney General, which happened when voters in the town of Milton initially voted against complying with the law and then went to court against the Attorney General. The case went all the way up to the Supreme Digital Court, which is the highest court in Massachusetts, which then ruled that three A is constitutional and mandatory and enforceable for all MBTA communities. So no major changes came out of that case. The second case, which happened this spring, was when Duxbury and eight other communities sued for exemptions to three A based on the argument that it could be an unfunded mandate, meaning that the state legislature hadn't appropriated enough funds to cover the costs of complying with the law. Again, the court ruled that this law is not an unfunded mandate. Zoning is a regular function of municipal government, so it doesn't impose extra costs. And again, all communities are still required to comply. So both these legal cases ended in the conclusion that this is state law, it's established, and it is a mandatory program. I think it's important to talk a little bit about what happens if Born decides not to adopt a multifamily district this fall. So the immediate consequence is that the state is conditioning a lot of grant funding on compliance with this law, like it conditioned grant funding on compliance with all other state laws. And those grants go to things like community planning, infrastructure work, roads, sidewalks, land conservation, flood resilience projects, and economic development. And the other side of this is that the Attorney General has promised to ensure all MBTA communities adopt multifamily zoning districts. So if a county meeting does not adopt one, the courts could somehow ask the town to adopt one. That could look a variety of ways, and it won't be at the discretion of a court. But it could just look like escalating fines and fees, it could look like a court-appointed official drawing up a zoning district, or it could even look like a simple ban on denying applications for multifamily housing until a zoning district is in place. CHAPA is getting a legal opinion on what these types of consequences could be, so we can provide more reliable information on it because it's not underwriting anywhere else. So as soon as we have that, it should be next few days now, we'd be happy to share. So now I want to go over some frequently asked questions, since we have a little bit more time. So now I want to go over some frequently asked questions since we have a little bit more time tonight. The first one up in here is how would multifamily zoning impact municipal finances? This was a big question beginning the process when I first started doing this. At this point, I think it's pretty well-established. Four towns, Mansfield, Medfield, Milton, and West Newbury paid consultants to conduct economic impact analyses of what would happen if multifamily zoning districts were built to their full capacity. And they did that by comparing the costs in terms of staffing, school, police and fire costs, and other departments, against the revenues the town would collect from property taxes on new developments and vehicle excise taxes from new residents. And all of these studies have found that the taxes from new multifamily housing would exceed the cost to serve their residents. So the fiscal impact would be positive. I think some folks found this surprising. And so if you're interested in looking at the studies that these towns commissioned, I'd be happy to share them with you. And I think they're pretty interesting to read through. Another big question I get is how this would impact the average taxpayer's wallet? How would this impact property taxes? And this, of course, relies on a whole host of things, and it relies on decisions made by municipal governments. But the general trend across the state over the last few decades is that towns that have had the least population growth or population loss have seen their property taxes rise the most, whereas towns that have seen higher population growth have seen slower property tax growth. Now, there's been property tax growth everywhere, unfortunately, that's just a fact in Massachusetts right now. But the tax growth has been lower in communities with rising population. And in general, that's because when you have more people to split the cost municipal services, you tend to have a lower tax bill for most of them. This is also from the Massachusetts Tax Payers Foundation. They have a lot more research on this that I'd really recommend anyone who's interested looking at. I'm happy to talk about it more. Another question I get a lot is how this would impact a town's sewer and water responsibilities. I think this is probably the most complicated question. And it kind of depends on what your individual scenario was like. But on one side, if you place your multifamily district in an area that is not already served by town sewer and water, the county is not divided, is not required to extend its sewer and water network to service new developments. And developers can build ninety bedrooms or less on private subway systems that would be built at their own expense. On the other end, if you do have public water and sewer serving your multifamily zoning district, you generally can't deny service to new developments, but if you don't have capacity in your existing wastewater treatment tanks, generally, and this depends on case law, developers can be convinced or will volunteer to pay for necessary upgrades to wastewater treatment facilities because it can take towns years to catch up with the demand from the developers. But that's kind of a case-by-case thing, and I think is maybe the most complex case-by-case topic that I brought up tonight. Another question I get a lot is about school enrollment. Often, people think new development will cause issues with school capacity. And generally, this is not something towns have to worry about because in pretty much every town across Massachusetts right now, people are having fewer kids and school enrollments are declining. This graph of BORN's school enrollment shows actually one of the more rapid declines in school enrollment we're seeing across the state. At the same time, residents of multifamily housing are much less likely to have school-aged children than residents of single-family homes. Again, multifamily housing tends to appeal more to people that are downsized and seniors or are young people getting their first apartments, so they're not quite as likely to have kids. So the assumption is that multifamily housing is not likely to reverse the decline in school enrollment that BORN and other communities are seeing. And another question is about what would this actually look like? If we put a multifamily zoning district in place, how many new homes might the town actually see? The thing about zoning is that it doesn't have a direct relationship with the building. You're merely giving property owners the option to build if they choose to do so. It's entirely possible, based on a whole host of factors, that no one will choose to do so in the first year. For a new house to be built, a property owner has to decide either to redevelop their own land or sell to develop. And so that decision will be made on a parcel-by-parcel basis by many people. And we can't be absolutely certain of how many people will decide to build multifamily housing on their land. We can say probably that new buildings, more profitable buildings, will be less likely to be redeveloped. And vacant or unprofitable buildings will be more likely to be redeveloped. But things like interest rates, labor costs, economic conditions will all affect the decisions of individual owners. So we can't be sure how much we'll get by per year. Because BORN's district is in a mostly developed area, what we can probably expect to see is gradual, lot-by-lot development of modest multifamily housing over the next several decades. This is a changing town landscape at once. You're creating an option for new development, and we can expect to see developers and private individuals taking advantage of it gradually over decades. And one last piece of information for the town is that although the law requires the town to allow multifamily housing in at least one area, the town has a lot of discretion on how any new development would look and how it will be oriented on property. So the town can regulate the maximum heights of new buildings. It can regulate the minimum setbacks from roadways, open space, or block coverage requirements, requirements to screen buildings from other buildings with a rotation or fencing, arching requirements, basic designs on the architecture of new buildings. And a really key decision is that the town can require up to ten percent of homes in new developments to be de-restricted as affordable to people making less than eighty percent of the area median income. Which is about seventy-two thousand dollars a year. The one thing the town can't do is that it cannot exclude families and workers with age requirements per person to be over fifty-five or older age, and have to allow people who are in their working years. Finally, what can BORN do to prepare for town meeting? Again, you're almost there. This is when I think the public engagement step is really most important, which is part of why I'm here tonight. But a few of the steps that the counties have finalized is just a half, as I've heard, it's multifamily zoning district location. And then finalized, it's bylaw regulating all those things like height setbacks, affordability requirements that I just talked about. You can send your map and bylaw to state officials to confirm that it complies with the law, so you can make sure what you're voting on town meeting is something that is needing the requirements of the law. And the last thing I think that I'd really recommend is just maximizing public engagement and outreach before town meeting. There's a lot of misconceptions about this law. And I think really getting out and talking to as many people as possible about what this law is and what it's about will be really important. So that is my overview of the law. I have my content information on the screen if folks want to send me an email with any questions. But with that, I'd be happy to talk to the board and anyone in the public about anything I presented and try to answer questions back there.
Thank you, Will. That was very educational. Is there anyone on the board that would have any questions for Will at this time? Liz?
Yeah, Will, I don't know if you're aware, but BORN actually has a fair amount of multi-unit. I don't know whether our zoning supports it, but you go around town, we actually do this already, and the downtown zoning favors this. So I don't know, I guess we're presenting at town meeting. But it might be important to point out that we actually already do this and that there are examples of this around. I don't know how familiar you are. We're not true, you know?
Yeah, that's a great point. And I remember talking to the planning board when I was there on Tuesday about how you already allow a fair amount of multifamily housing in town, which is fantastic. I think BORN is kind of a leader in that respect. There are a lot of towns in Massachusetts that don't allow much at all, which is why I've given this presentation a lot of times. I try to emphasize why there aren't a lot of opportunities for it already. So I think if you allow it already, I think I would suggest emphasizing, we've already done this and we're trying to just reshape the question a little bit to make sure we're in compliance with the state's zoning law. Because if you're already, you're allowing like twelve units per acre already, allowing fifteen is really not a huge change. But it will make it a little easier for some people to build, and I think that's still a possibility.
Also, someone raised the question about the Sagamore Park and Ride and how a lot of our attention was focused in the downtown area, which makes sense in many ways. But is there any, bus service is also compliant with this, is that true? So if we had multi-housing over there, the state would look favorably upon that?
It could. So because BORN doesn't currently have a year-round commuter stop, you're not legally required to place your district next to transit. You can actually place it just about anywhere you want in town. That said, the state has guidelines for where it makes sense to allow multifamily housing. And generally, they say, A, near transit, wherever you have the middle-class services. And B, in areas where there's a lot of services. So if you have a downtown core where there are shops, restaurants, supermarkets, whereas more walkable area, that's where they generally encourage you to place your district, which it sounds like is what you've done.
That is what we chose, yeah.
Although you might have more reliable transit service at the bus stops by the bridges, I think a very good case may be that it makes more sense to place your zoning district in a place where it's already walkable and, if not walkable to everything, and short driving distances to a lot of things that people need because that will cut down the traffic and leave more people down there.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Is there anyone in the, oh, Dan?
Yeah, like Will was saying, I think in our downtown, we have twelve units per acre by right currently. And what this would do is go from twelve to fifteen, so would increase it by three units per acre. And when we did the zoning for downtown, we promised a lot of the other villages throughout the town we would not put increased density in their village centers. So we wanted the commercial and the biggest growth in Buzzards Bay, which is our main street in our downtown. So I think this, you know, from twelve to fifteen, in downtown would make a lot more sense, a lot better sense to do it here than versus doing it in Kalamet or some other place that doesn't have the resources. And also, there's no other station for the train, you know, with services nearby.
Right. I guess I was thinking, you know, in BORN Village, you've got the redone school, you've got several small apartment buildings. I don't really know whether they're fifteen units per acre or not, but, you know, there are a fair number. And there is a train station there that's probably less durable than the one that we have here, but it is there.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know, so that's all. I just hadn't thought about all those pieces until I heard that.
I was going to say, going back to when we crafted the bylaw for the downtown district, a lot of times at that time, we were thinking that build it and they will come. And that's kind of reversed now. Developers are looking, they want to see a huge amount of people living in that particular area before they commit to doing something. So this could be a win for BORN if we increase that density in the downtown area because they're looking for people who want to be out walking up and down the street. And they're going to then offer more. So we've got a couple of other developments that we've just approved and they're in process of going along. And those people would be the type that would be out walking the streets. And now a developer might say, hey, maybe I'll build a coffee shop, or maybe I'll build something else. So I think this could be a boon and help us with our downtown area.
We've made progress and.
I think, yeah, I think it's more of an enhancement rather than a detriment, especially for the downtown area. And I like the fact that, you know, it's been brought up a few times that we don't have or we're kind of restricted now on our wastewater allotment. We're getting down to the nitty-gritty. And it's basically, I think it was page nine on that, developers can only build if they can figure out sewer and water plan that meets state and local requirements. So if there's no sewer allocation, they're going to have to figure out something else. So I think that'll calm a few people in town. Corinne?
Just to add to that, that we do allow housing above the shops in our village districts, which I think we have one on tonight. So we do allow it, but not at this density. And I think that's what we assure the town is that, yeah, you can do it in your village, like in Pocasset or whatever, but just not at these densities. So you can, because some of those people walk to the Pocasset stores in Mo Beach. So they can do that there, but just not at this density. So I think it's smart to leave the density in the downtown area and leave those other village areas smaller if they are to that.
Very good. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment or ask any questions of Will? Seen none? MJ, do you want to unmute?
Thank you. So actually, I have two questions. Like, thank you, this is a little bit more robust presentation and the slideboard I got last night, so I did appreciate that. I, we saw a map of the overlay district for this. And I don't know when it's appropriate to make comments about that, but I was particularly thinking about the police station property that is currently not in the multifamily overlay district. But based on the properties around it that are mostly residential and that we're thinking about using it for housing partnership property, that maybe like including that property in the MFOD would be great. And I'm just not sure when I can make that comment.
Thank you.
This is my personal comment representing the slideboard.
Thank you. I think Jen Copeland, our planner, was going to next show some of the pages that you saw last night and to share a better explanation of what's required to comply and why we wound up with the districts that were shown.
There was a reason, right, for that, yeah. I was thinking about that.
So maybe now might be a good time for Jen to share with us.
Be sure if the audience doesn't have any questions.
Yeah.
There's another guy with a question up there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the enterprise guy.
Owen?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to say that it was a good presentation. I'm a young professional. I don't live in BORN. I live in Valletta, but, you know, I'm in BORN all the time. And, you know, I live in, my girlfriend and I had a nearly impossible time finding housing. You know, anywhere in this area, and she's an ocean scientist, we're both, you know, young professionals, we're not making a ton of money. And it took about a year, year and a half for us to find this place that's, you know, even passable. So I think that this law is amazing and that, you know, most communities benefit from this type of housing. So that's why I should feel, good job, Will. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Chip?
Over here, because I have to scroll through.
It's still in red. You have kind of green.
Okay, for the record, my name is Jennifer Copeland. I'm the town planner, and I'm here tonight to present, add to what Will has presented on earlier. So I might skip through a couple of my slides because they kind of say a lot of the same information. Can everybody hear me in the audience? Okay. So the, you know, it's a proposed zoning bylaw for the multifamily housing, MBTA. It's chapter forty A, section three A. And I first wanted to say what BORN's housing goal is. From our Housing Production Plan, which was approved in two thousand and twenty-three, it's to create an adequate supply of housing that is safe, healthy, and attainable for people of all income levels and diverse needs to purchase or rent. The MBTA multifamily housing encourages the creation of housing near public transit to promote sustainable and walkable neighborhoods. Bourne is categorized as an adjacent small town, um, as Will said, and we're one of 177 communities that are required, uh, under the MBTA to create the zoning. The, the Bourne, in 2020, Bourne had 11,140 total housing units. So the requirement to meet the MBTA is, uh, 5% of the housing stock, which, uh, comes out to a unit capacity of 557 units. Um, there is a minimum gross density requirement of 15 units per acre. There's no minimum land area requirements, and there's no age restrictions, and it has to be suitable for families with children, um, i.e., uh, no bedroom or occupancy caps. As Will said, um, the only requirement is to create the zoning to enable people to have multifamily units on their properties by right. We're not required to, um, build the housing or the infrastructure for water or sewer, um, or to pay for design for the infrastructure. And it does not supersede the Wetland Protection Act or, um, Title V requirements. So what we did was, um, we're going to create a new multifamily overlay district in the Buzzards Bay area of the downtown. That's what the planning board selected. We looked at the three areas, the gateway, the core, and the waterfront. And, um, what the proposed zoning does is allow for multifamily housing, which is three or more units, um, to be permitted by right, and it allows for two family dwellings to be permitted by right. Uh, site plan review would still be required, and parking requirements for multifamily dwellings is reduced from 1.5 spaces to one space per unit. The base residential density is increased to meet the minimum requirement of 557 units and, um, 15 units per acre. And I can get into that a little bit more with the compliance modeling. So the compliance modeling has been quite complicated and complex and.
Make that a little bigger, the map.
Sure. I think I can. Yep.
Yeah, that's better.
That better?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. So I worked with the Cape Cod Commission and we also worked with Barrett Planning Group, and we're still actually refining the compliance model numbers because what happens is, um, as Will said, you look at all of the different areas and then you have to, there's a density denominator that deducts the parcels that you can't, um, use for housing, and so that can make your unit per acre higher. It's going to, it's looking like it's around 700 units total rather than 557 with the way that the areas are selected. Um, the areas are described as area number one. They're the yellow shaded areas. And this is, um, to the eastern side is Belmont Circle and to the western side is the other rotary to Wareham. And so the areas are between, they're north of Main Street and south of the Armory Road, the bypass. And there's two, um, Main Street and the area of Cohasset Ave. And that is a total of 34.4 acres. And then area two is, um, partially in the downtown core, which is the red outline, and partially in the downtown gateway, which is the blue line. And that is a total of 10.8 acres. Yeah, so they, so we're actually still finalizing those numbers to put into the, the bylaw. Um, and I should have those this week. And as MJ was asking about the parcels on Main Street, um, so, so any parcels in this area that were highlighted that weren't connected to the larger areas were removed for contiguity, um, because that's spot, spot zoning. The parcels designated as sensitive were removed, open space and wetlands. And then the parcels directly on Main Street were removed because, um, our current zoning bylaw has what's called a ground floor limitation, a GFL. That requires, um, any parcels directly on, that have frontage on Main Street to have commercial on the first floor with residential on the units above, above the second floor and above. If they want to not have commercial and have residential on the first floor, they're required to, um, apply for a special permit to have that. And so when I met with the state in February, they required us to remove all the Main Street parcels that had frontage. Does that help answer your question, MJ?
I can, through the chair?
Yes, MJ.
It does answer my question, but I, I think particularly the parcel where the old police station was, which is adjacent and opposite single family residences. And we have offered it to the housing partnership for affordable housing. That if they could actually come under the MFOD, it would help them to be able to make it financially viable. So I, um, I, I, um, I don't know about spot zoning and then MFOD, but practically, like, looking at the area and the location and what we're hoping to have happen there, uh, that particular parcel, I think if it could be included in the MFOD would be really beneficial to the town and to the goal of creating this affordable housing. I am totally in favor of the whole concept. I like the idea, like, everything you're doing. I just think that that particular parcel would be great to include in the MFOD. So that's my personal opinion and my comment. So I, I think spot zoning, there's something we could do, but I think that it's sort of practically in the, in the way it looks and where it is in town, it makes sense to me. So that's all. Thank you.
Dan?
Yeah. We, we approved the downtown zoning with, we're trying to get commercial on the first floor, residential on the second floor. If we start excluding different lots along the way, we're gonna have the spot zoning and everybody gonna come in and try to change, just like we did with the marijuana district. Everything had to have frontage on, so we're trying to keep it out of the residential, you know, to turn to the reverse on this thing. So I, I don't think it would be appropriate to make a special case because we like a special interest for a group or whatever it might be. So I wholeheartedly feel commercial first floor, residential second. There's plenty of other space in the backside.
I think we talked about preserving the streetscape was something we really wanted. And I, you know, yeah.
We did.
We talked about that at length.
Yep.
And they can do multifamily there, but they just have to have that commercial.
They have to have commercial, yeah.
On that front part. And I think the partnership and the housing trust would be able to, to deal with that when it comes along. And they'll still be able to get their, their units that they need there, but just not.
Right.
You know.
And I think Jen did mention that spot zoning is not allowable under this MBTA's 3A zoning.
Anywhere.
Anyway.
No way.
Okay, so I'll continue on just to, um, you know, Will actually spoke about the non-compliance. So I'll, I'll, I'll go to the benefits of the housing. Um, it's to, um, you know, increase the number of units that we have and, um, you know, help keep, keep people in Bourne because people are leaving. Um, it will help our workforce. It will support the local economy. Um, it's in an area that's walkable where people can go to shops, restaurants, Buzzards Bay Park, the community building, and the canal. And there's lots of other amenities in downtown that are walkable. That's, it makes it a very desirable place to have housing units where people can walk to transit and, and stores and things like that. So I think that's all I have for that. I mean, I can keep, keep this on the map if people have, I can keep this up if people have questions about it.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the things that people should realize, because when you start throwing out numbers, 500 something units, 700 units, it just actually is allowing people to be able to do more with their property. And it's not saying you have to do that 700 unit, but you're just allowing it. You're just saying the base board for people to do it. So I don't want, you know, the community to think, oh, you know, in the next couple of years, we're gonna have 500 more units because that's not the, it's not the case. It's just really increasing the value of your property and what you can do with your property.
Yes, I like the fact that it puts those opportunities in the hands of the residents.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public have any questions for Jen or seeing none? Thank you for the presentation. Thank you very much, Will.
Let me.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Will. Absolutely. We'll see you on the 10th.
Okay. Up next is the application for site plan review, number 510A, 325 MacArthur Boulevard. This application is for construction of a new 25,000 square foot office and garage repair facility and a new fueling station on a 12.12 acre parcel adjacent to the current ISWM facility located at 325 and 201 MacArthur Boulevard. It's located in a business three of B3 district. Welcome, Asa.
Good evening. Uh, Asa Mintz, I'm the operations manager at ISWM. Uh, I'm also the chair of the ISWM Building Committee. Nice to see you all tonight. Also with me is Dan Barrett, the general manager, and Peter Glick and Cam C. and Kruy. They're our civil consultants from SMMA. And I've got Greg Yanchenko on Zoom. He's our architect. So, um, before I let them get into sort of the nitty gritty of the actual filing, I like to just take a few minutes and kind of go through the 30,000-foot view at ISWM. I think it's probably good and, you know, to put our filing in context here because a lot of people don't necessarily see the day-to-day and the permitting that we go through and all that. So we actually, we fly a drone every month and sometimes more frequently to generate, um, usage, like airspace consumption, uh, and things like that and, and just track, track our progress. So I'm gonna hop over to the computer and I'm just gonna pull up some of our drone footage. I just wanted to kind of give you the, the lay of the land and then I'll, I'll hand it over to these guys.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, Jen, we lost our, uh.
Oh, you know what?
No, I know, I know where it is.
Yeah, you got it.
Yep. It's in here somewhere. There we go. All right. So this is, uh, this is our drone footage from, uh, not even, not even a month ago. Um, but I've overlaid our, our property, the parcels of the property. Um, that's the, the black line there. And, and this site is broken into three parcels. It's broken into a 74 acre parcel, a 25 acre parcel, and a 12 acre parcel. The 74 acre parcel here has historically been, you know, the location of the landfill since the 60s and 70s and, and still is. This 25 acre parcel was purchased, uh, maybe Dan will correct me, I think in the mid, early, mid 2000s, something like that, and was site assigned for solid waste handling and processing. It, it, it has our offices, it has our, uh, salt shed, it has a CND transfer station, and it has a single stream transfer station. It's also the parcel that has our residential area on it as well. And then the property to the south of that is, was purchased, uh, in 2016. That's what we call the 12 acre parcel. Um, and that parcel is the subject of this filing. So in 2022, we went through a, a large permitting expansion. We permitted an additional 5.1 million cubic yards of airspace, which equates to about 20 years of life of the landfill. And it was, it's done in three phases. Um, it's phases, what we call phases seven, eight, and nine. And phases seven and eight are on this parcel here, and phase nine is on the, uh, is actually a vertical expansion on top of the existing landfill. And that's actually what we're doing right now. Phases seven and eight were conceived before phase nine was thought about. And so we didn't want to change the numbers. We figured we would just confuse everybody by doing them out of order. So, um, so right now, we're, we're doing the vertical expansion. If you've been in there, you can kind of see us building up on top of the capped areas. And, um, that will last us another approximately four years, that vertical expansion. What that does is that buys us a little bit of time, it buys us four years, to move everything on this 12 acre, or 25 acre parcel onto the 12 acre parcel. There's a lot of site prep that has to happen. There's a lot of earth removal that has to happen on this parcel. And then we've got to move two buildings, our offices. And so you can imagine, there's a lot of work that has to be done to facilitate what we call the horizontal expansion into phases seven and eight. So, um, zoom in here a little bit. So the poster board that you see, uh, over there is actually the 12 acre, is the 12 acre parcel. Um, and it's, it's got, you know, the, the office and maintenance garage in the left, bottom left-hand corner. Uh, in this area, our transfer station, which is coming right behind our office and maintenance garage, um, in the northwest corner, um, kind of down the middle is gonna be, um, our, uh, residential area and sort of our bulk handling area with like brush and yard waste and stuff like that. And then on the east side is gonna be all the stormwater management. There's a huge basin that's gonna go on that side, and that'll handle all the stormwater from, um, the east side of the landfill as well as all the impervious area that we're gonna be creating on the 12 acre parcel. So that's kind of the big picture here. Um, it's, it's a, we always call it, it's, it's the big chess game that we play, you know? We're constantly moving these big pieces around thousands and tens of thousands of yards of material just to try to stay ahead of the landfill, which is, is, uh, is never-ending. It's always, uh, it's 365 days a year. So, um, with that, I would like to hand it over to Peter Glick. He'll get in to the details of his design and, uh, kind of drill down a little bit.
Thank you, Asa. Uh, as Asa mentioned, my name is Peter Glick. For the record, I'm a civil engineer with Sims, Zemini, McKee Associates. We're gonna go with old school boards if that, that's okay with everybody. And, uh, is this, is this the right place for, for, for you folks?
Yes.
I'm gonna stop sharing.
Everyone can see it. Little bit about, about the, uh, the 12 acre parcel, which I will refer to as this right now, is that the, the project that we're looking at is a, uh, a, for, it's a site plan review amendment because, you know, you folks have already seen it and already have approved a, a site plan on it. So this is an amendment to what you already approved on the 12 acre parcel. We're simply looking for the area where we prepared garage and maintenance building ago, which is my finger is tracing it in here. As Asa mentioned, the future transfer station, the residential area, and, and the pond will be partially constructed for this as well because, uh, some of the stormwater will, will go there as well. But for right now, the, the construction that we're looking at is for, for this area right here. It, uh, involves a new ISWM building, which is a 25,000 square foot building. We bonded from the zoning board and we just received a, um, approval on the variance for the building height to 47 feet from 35 feet. That was just approved about two weeks ago. So that's in the process of getting written up and the decision on that. But the building itself, as I mentioned, 25,000 square feet. This section of the building in here is the offices and, um, facilities, uh, locker rooms and, and items that support the, the. locker rooms, and, and items that support the, the offices in there. The garage and maintenance areas are these areas in here, which you've probably seen some of the equipment that, that there is on the, in, on the landfill. And it's quite large and that maintenance, that material, those equipment have to be constantly maintained and. So the idea is to be able to get that equipment to the building and without disrupting everything around the building. So there's a, there's a track that will run around the edge of the site that will allow all the equipment from the upper edge to come around and to get into the building. And I just wanted to, folks to see that. Parking for the building, there's thirty-six parking spaces, which are located in the front of the building right here. The building entrance is right over here, in the section here. There's handicap accessible spaces right there as well. And there's direct access into, into the public part of the building. There'll be staff parking and also parking for visitors. The drive coming down will be extended. Where, right now, it ends right about here as you come in. But it will extend now, you know, if it's constructed to this point here as part of this project. There's also a fueling station there that we're proposing to put in that'll provide fuel for all the, all the, all the equipment that comes in and is used on the site. That's proposed in this area right over here. Other generator transformer right over here. There's a dumpster pad that's proposed in this area right here, which will have a dumpster and all the waste from the building will go there before it goes there. So it'll be captured like that. As far as utilities go for the building, water will be extended down from town water down along the road and it'll loop around the building and back in. And there's hydrants for fire protection around the building. The building will be fully, fully sprinkled for, for protection for fires as well. The, the sanitary system for the building, we, we are in a nitrogen sensitive area here. So we're going to have an, an, an innovative alternative system, the best available technology that we're using here. And it'll, it'll have a trickling filter and that, that'll go to a, to leaching trenches, which will disperse it into, into the ground there. The soils on site, we've done borings on site. We've done test pits with the board of health out there witnessing them. And the soils, as you might have guessed, in these areas are very sandy, sandy soils. The water table is very deep. We didn't hit anyplace close to the water table or anything where we were, where we were digging. We're planning, as far as the stormwater goes, Kim will talk a little bit about that now. As utilities, then I'll come back and finish up a little bit on around the edges. But Kim, go over the stormwater.
Cam St. Croix, one of the other civil engineers helping Pete. As far as stormwater goes, stormwater will run off from the paved areas into catch basins where they'll flow to vegetated filter strip before going into a bio retention area. The bio retention areas, there's two, and they're, they're connected together. So they're daisy chained where if there's overflows here and high storm events, they'll flow to this one right here. And all the stormwater will flow to this bio retention area, this bio retention area, or this recharge system right here. So all your water on site will be recharged and comply to different Borne regulations and Massachusetts regulations for TSS and things like that. I'll invite Peter back up.
Go. Great. Little bit about, about the building itself and the site. I'm just going to flash. Well, no, I'll stick with this for a second, I'm sorry. Landscaping for the site, we've, we've included rows of trees along the edge right here as you, as you come into the site. And a little softer planting around the, the parking lot with some shrubs and shrubs around the building. And also some, some groves of, of planting on this edge here to, to, to screen out the. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Can you hear me okay? Screen out some, some of the facility over here as well. The bio retention basins, as Cam mentioned, those will have bio retention plantings in there and they'll be overseeded with, with a New England wetland mix. And that, they'll, they'll naturally grow into being the rain gardens that we, that are so desired in these areas. One thing that we, the planning department had just received from us today, which he did not have, was part of it, it was part of the electronic submission. And I apologize, it didn't make its way into the, the, the package of the solid plans that we have there. But we did submit that. I realize that you didn't have it today when I read the letter. And so I, I sent it in to you folks today. And it's just, it's the, it's the lighting plan. And again, this was in the electronic submission. But the lighting setup with the, we have light poles along the road in a few areas and along the perimeter, this one has a double head. But other than that, they're all, they're all single head lighting around the edge. They're, they're thirty foot high mounted LED lighting with cutoff luminaires. So, and, and the luminaires themselves, the fixtures are, are able to, to tilt them so that they can get the, the right distribution of lighting on there. And then on the building, there's wall packs that are very similar to the same fixture that we used on the poles. And those are at fifteen foot heights to illuminate around the building. But the, the edge of the, of one foot handle doesn't exceed anywhere off of the property. There's tiny bit of bleeding, point five and point one, that's just slightly over the, over the property line on these edges here. But it's just almost impossible to get that exactly, exactly right. But we've got the lighting set, so there's, it's, 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 it'll be a safe and a, and a lit place for people coming in during the late day and evening, evening hours, which will be maintained and operated by, by ISWM. Just to touch on the building a little bit, just so you get an idea of what the building looks like. As Asa mentioned, Greg Yanchenko, the project architect, is also online. So Greg, Greg can answer any questions and he can give me a weird look if I'm saying anything wrong. The building, again, twenty-five thousand square feet. The front part of the building makes up the, the break rooms, the, the offices, the conference room, the men's, men's restrooms and lockers and storage and work areas for the general. The garage, you can see it's laid out around the back areas here where it's safe for vehicles to come in out the back. Emergency vehicles also can, can loop around there very easily in that area. A little bit about the, the way the building looks. And you folks have probably seen these, these photos around, around your building. When you walk in, you see it. So I don't know if you could have missed it. But it's, it's a lovely building with, with, there was a lot of thought that went into this during the, during the process with the, with the building committee and, and the end users and the, and the architect to make a thoughtful building that, that meets the, the requirements and the, and the operations and functionality of the ISWM. But what isn't, and I saw, it's, it's, it's a, it has the gable, gable ends and, and some materials there that, that you would, that you might see down here on the cave. And so it doesn't have that industrial look to it. And, and that's what we were really looking for in, in the design of the building. And it meets the character of what we, what we were hoping to achieve down here. And we're very, very happy with that as well. Another thing of the, the rear of the building and the area of the building that did require the building height variance is this section of the building, which was the, the garage, the, the area in there. And the reason for that was because of the, again, the large equipment that I mentioned goes up overhead. There's cranes overhead that drop, drop equipment in there and it just didn't have that clear room. So that's the area over there. The rest of the building is not, not the setbacks. We mute all the other zoning setbacks of foundation, everything else there. That generally covers anything we have on the building. I'm glad to answer questions or if there's architectural questions, Greg is glad to answer those. Or operations questions, I, I, Asa and Barrett here, so anything, we're glad to do.
Thank you. Yeah, I see this as a modification and it looks very good. Is there any comments from the board? Chris?
I just had a couple of points that I made the other day when you went before the board of selection, select board. And that was the choice of stone at the bottom of the building. Go with a darker stone than the light stone. We saw that at the Bourne Middle School, the light colored stone at the bottom. You get splash up and it never comes clean again. So if you go with the darkest stone, that makes a big, huge difference. I think we were talking earlier with Asa about volids required in front of the building. It's just more of a safety issue. And you can make them decorative. You can make them look like part of the building, so encourage you to look at that. But the one thing that I heard you mention was the lighting, and that was the wall packs on the sides of the building. We've been trying to discourage people from using wall packs because you can't control them. It just goes out. We want it to go down. So I would look at if, unless there's cutoffs on it.
There are, there are, it's, it's the same fixture that.
The, the generic wall packs, again, just puts light out there. We want it directing down. And especially over your overhead bays in the back, you want those lighting to come down. You don't want it to go out. That can blind people going in and out of the garages.
Yeah, and maybe, here, Greg, Greg is there. Anything you can add to the lighting?
Excuse me, can you ask any good question? What I just wanted to say about the lighting was basically the general hours operation for the transfer station and the landfill, and Asa can clarify it, is pretty much from, let's say, a seven to three, seven to four operation. The lighting will primarily be used just for, you know, obviously general access into the building. I believe that we can coordinate a timing schedule for those lights. Obviously, in any kind of emergency situations, something like a DPW, you would clearly want the lights on. But in the case of the building wall packs and everything, the only thing that code requires is that the, all the personnel entrances have a light on them so that they can get in there. But I'm, you know, I'm confident, working with Asa and the board, we can set those lights so that they're not on all night or anything. And the lighting would be only sufficient for safety and security around the facility. And we are using the dark sky fixtures. And the goal is to keep all the light concentrated at the entrances and everything. And we're not trying to do up, we're not trying to light up Fenway Park. And this particular operation, I don't believe, requires a bright lighting, except maybe in emergencies or, or special circumstances. But in, with other boards and stuff, we have worked with them to set the lighting schedule so whether it's compatible with the community and whatever the board would like. And I let Asa chime in on that to see if I missed anything. But again, I don't see the lights being a major issue for operational requirements due to the nature of these operations.
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely right. Operations are primarily daytime operations. Obviously, in the wintertime, I kind of go into. But I, I've been involved with other projects that we use, and the, the brand name Rab comes to mind. They have very specific downward facing lighting. I know right now, we've got some wall packs and you're right, they're just sort of like, they just light everything up. So we will make sure that we spec a light that is a full cutoff.
The orientation of this building is fairly close to MacArthur Boulevard. I know there's a very good vegetated buffer, but I would just hate to see lights often in the woods and stuff and it just, it doesn't look great.
Absolutely.
And again, you can control that with timers or whatever, so that's great. That's all I had noted.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'm going to review on this project and.
Dave, thank you.
Planning department had a couple of questions. Other, good, good project, good presentation. I had questions that you answered in the presentation, but I've still got a couple of, I want to ask. Planning department brought up the parking requirements. You're showing thirty-six proposed spaces and the building inspector has left that up to the planning board to decide adequacy. Thirty-eight, how many, how many staff are there?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Thirty-six spaces. That's the question the board has to decide is adequate for the parking. You've, you've got a dumpster, you've addressed the waste receptacle. Lighting, yes. The submission, did it include catalog cuts of the, of the luminaires?
Probably did not. This sheet, it, it has the description of, of them on here.
Sure. Is that something you could provide?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I am reassured about your presentation about dark skies and full cutoffs and surprisingly pleased that it's not going to be lit at night. You only have to look at that Dunkin' Donuts on MacArthur Boulevard. I bring this up every time.
The alternative landing strip for the Otis.
That we have been burned about lights being approved such like at a ninety degree and being installed at a forty-five degree. Sure. Take a ride by there. Catalog cuts, full cutoff, dark skies and glare guards on light packs. Landscape and vegetation, you provided trees in excess of the requirement. And I like the way they're laid out. The bio retention area has plantings in it, using a lot of plugs and so on, which is economical and a good way to go. We've been burned a few times on rain gardens, lack of maintenance, nobody owns them. If that rain garden was planted in the spring of this year and it wasn't maintained, I think the losses would have been significant. So the establishment period is key. And so I'd love to hear a discussion on, once it's in the ground, you told, I saw in your presentation, you have yard hydrants. That's good. That was one of the questions, exterior water. And you haven't hired your contractor yet, but I'd like to see some language and maybe a maintenance plan submitted, at least during the establishment period, and specify the length of the maintenance period and the operations within. This summer, until recently, we didn't have measurable rain after mid-July. And who's going to own that responsibility is a key.
Sure. I, I can address that. The, the, the plantings, all plantings on site will be done according to the specifications that are going to be issued by us during the, during the, the construction document phase. It'll go out to the contractor. They'll, they'll bid on, on that package right there. And the, the landscaping and lawns spec, they, they require times of the year that you can, that you can actually put the, put the plantings in the ground.
Sure.
So it's, it can, it can only happen between, I believe it's maybe August fifteenth or September fifteenth and December fifteenth. And then it picks back up in March through June. Something, something, something similar to that right there. So it does, it does exclude the winter months and it does exclude the summer months.
But maintenance during establishment is key.
Once it gets that, once, once it goes into the ground and, and, and then, and it's accepted as substantially complete and, and it's in the ground and accepted by, by the architect, then there's a, there's a one year maintenance period that the contractor owns for maintaining that, that vegetation.
We, we've had a bunch that essentially ended up as muddy holes. And I'm hoping that's not the case here. And that goes to ongoing maintenance once the guarantee and the maintenance period expires. On your, on your plant list, black oaks, ten to twelve. The town standard is three to three and a half inch caliper. Can you make that change? Everything else looks pretty good. See if I had anything else here. Lighting. I, that covers most of my questions and satisfied with the answers.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question or comment? Seeing none? To, can you, Dave, would you like to?
Sure. I'm, I'm going to make a motion to a. Sure. I'm going to make a motion to approve the project. Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed this project and the applicant. Town of Bourne proposes a modification of site plan review for the expansion of the integrated solid waste management facility. The site is located in the B3 zoning district and is allowed use under section 2220. Mr. Chairman, based on the Planning Board reviews of exhibits, testimony of the applicant, experts, witnesses, and the recording of the proceedings, the Planning Board has found that the project is consistent with the Town of Bourne zoning bylaw, section 1230, site plan excluding special permit requirements as noted in footnote 12 of section 2220. Therefore, I move to approve, approve special permit number 510A in accordance with the following findings, terms, and conditions. Findings, the lot is not located in a flood zone, Water Resource District or Zone 2. It is not located within 100 feet of a wetland, and is not in the area of critical environmental concern or river corridor. The eastern portion of the site is located in the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program Priority Habitat for State Protected Rare Species. The extension or alteration will not substantially more, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use. The facility is comprised of three parcels totaling 111 acres. The existing 74-acre parcel landfill dates back to 1967. MAP 32, parcel nine, a 25-acre parcel utilized for solid waste handling operations beginning in 2005, the proposed location for the horizontal landfill expansion. MAP 32, parcel five, a 12-acre parcel, undeveloped vacant land, which is the proposed area for the relocation of facilities and solid waste handling operations currently on the 25-acre parcel. The modification of the site plan review consists of the construction of a 25,000-square-foot integrated solid waste management facility. The building will have offices, training room, storage, vehicle maintenance garage, vehicle storage garage, locker rooms for staff. The second floor will be a mezzanine for storage. Waiver. The Planning Board grants a waiver for loading requirements under section 1238. The Planning Board grants a waiver for the required 10% of the interior parking lot to be landscaped. The Planning Board grants a waiver for required waste receptacles on the premises. Condition, this permit is subject to all rules, regulations, and bylaws of the Town of Bourne. The applicant must obtain zoning, Board of Appeals, dimensional relief for building height. All work authorized under this approval shall be in accordance with the application, supportive materials, and testimony of the owner and its representatives. All findings, terms, conditions of the previous approval, SPR number 382, 411, 510, shall continue to remain in effect. Prior to obtaining a building permit, provide a lighting plan to the Planning Department for approval by the Planning Board representative. Details of the lighting fixtures are needed to confirm style, height, and determine if the budding of properties will be affected. I would add, confirm that it's a cutoff luminaire. Prior to obtaining a building permit, a stormwater operators and maintenance plan must be submitted. It must include illicit discharge compliance statement. Number seven, install motor vehicle stops and/or bollards in front, at the front entrance of the building. Number eight, defer to the health, fire, conservation departments and the Bourne Water District for final determination of compliance for sewage, emergency access, underground turnaround, vehicle turnaround, conservation, and adequate water supply. Prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit and house built plan must be submitted to the Planning Board, showing all appurtenances above and below ground. And then I want to add a couple of additional conditions. Submit an emergency access plan for the Bourne Fire Department to review. Is that, is that covered under number eight?
I would think it is.
Strike that. Condition number 10, revise and resubmit planting plan for Planning Department review. Plant list to show black oak minimum caliber of three inches to three and a half inches. Number, that would be number?
Eleven.
Eleven. Submit landscape, maintenance plan for Planning Department review, including length of maintenance contract, maintenance equipment, timing, and methods. That's all I have.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you want to write that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that a vote?
It's a finding.
I think we need to add a finding that 36 parking spaces are adequate.
Very good.
Any comment from the public?
Just again, going back to number seven, motor vehicle stops or bollards in the front entrance, I would encourage them, and I've already spoken to ASIA about this, that they be bollards, because we've seen them save a lot of people in town with other buildings that we required bollards. Before, when we just had curb stops, cars, vehicles jumped those curb stops. So I think it's benefit for the town and for the public that might be visiting this particular building, that bollards be installed. And they can be decorative. That would be up to them. But I just suggest that they strongly consider that.
Make it a condition.
To number four.
It would be number 12 probably, a condition.
Thank you.
We'll add that as condition 13.
It's already on there. You just have to, it's on.
Yeah.
Oh, just strike the.
Seven.
Yeah, it's seven. It just said stops.
One just says, place stops.
Just replay, cross out vehicle stops and put bollards.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and like to roll call vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Dan?
Corinne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. unanimous.
Thank you.
Could move to close the hearing.
Thank you.
Next up, application for site plan review, special permit number 13-2025, 8 Waterhouse Road. Application is to add one dwelling unit on the second floor of an existing commercial space under section 4250, village mixed-use development. It is located in a village business B-District. Welcome, Rob.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert DeWarre here with Bracket Engineering on behalf of the applicants, Joanne and Gary Morgan. We have a property here, 8 Waterhouse Road. This is on the extension, the old layout of Waterhouse Road before they carried it up and around to get rid of the fifth street at the old Five Corners. It's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, very undersized, that's just over 3,400 square feet. And it does contain an existing building right now that has been historically and is currently used as a hair and nail salon, the Mamas and Papas Salon. The applicants are here tonight to propose renovating the existing second floor of the building, which comprises basically the center portion of the building into a residential dwelling unit. And they are a village business zoning district, therefore, we do require a special permit to allow the village mixed use. They have, currently, they're serviced by Town Water. They have natural gas. Overhead electric comes in here, and for sewage, they are, it's a combined system. They have an existing septic system here. It was installed circa 2004. And they also have an additional 2,500-gallon tight tank that is designated for one of the chairs, which is kind of the dye rinse station for the chemicals that they're forbidden from going into a septic system. The applicants are proposing to remove one of the existing chairs, not, not the chair that goes to the tight tank, but one of the other existing chairs. There's four chairs in the salon currently, so they will remove one to create three chairs, which allows the addition of the bedroom on the second floor. For parking, they do meet the parking requirements for both uses. They would have a combined required parking of seven spaces. We do have seven spaces existing on the parcel, right along the front. There is quite a bit of pavement. There is not much landscaping on the parcel. There's really not much more than a small landscape island here. Those familiar with the area, I know that it is kind of a sea of existing pavement from this lot, the street, which has some off-street, I mean, off-locus, parallel parking along the side here, as well as, you know, this is all paved on the buying property as well. So overall, it is a fairly straightforward property, project. It just requires the special permit. We have been, we have coordinated with the Health Department to, to confirm that the septic system can handle the flow of the additional bedroom as long as so that one chair is removed. And there's really no impact to pedestrian, there's no impact to parking, as though you can cover the required parking. There's no impact to the town utilities. So I think it's a pretty straightforward request for a special permit. Just for, just some display here, this is the layout of the upstairs. We do have an existing exterior staircase for one egress, an interior staircase for the second egress. And here's just a photo of kind of the existing building, just for those not familiar with the area. And with that.
Open up to any questions from the board.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Rob from the board?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. I mean, I was the reviewer on this. Very straightforward. I have nothing to say about it, other than it would be lovely to have more landscaping in that area, but I drive by there all the time, and I don't know how you do it. So, you know, it's a strange but known thing, you know. And I think this is great, because it adds another unit of housing. So.
Open up to any questions or comments from the public?
All right, well.
Seeing none.
How about I make a motion?
Before you go on, I just want to disclose that I know Mr. Morgan. We went to high school together 50 years ago.
[laughing].
We're not in constant contact. I see him here and there and stuff. But I don't think there'll be any conflict in my proceeding with voting on this one.
Great. Thank you.
All right. I just have, I guess, to comment. The stairs and the deck seem to be encroaching on those neighboring properties. Has there been some kind of resolve for that?
As far as we know, they've just been existing like that for many years. For our research, there's no official, like, easements or anything for that. But there's never been any problems, and I don't believe there's any real intention for that.
Yes.
Yeah.
We had a permit for the back stairs.
Right, yeah.
They closed up the department.
Yeah. We had a permit for ours.
Yep.
I just make part of record that we made mention of it and what their answer was to that.
Yeah. The butters are pretty businessy. You know, it's a dentist's office, I think, behind you, and then the animal, animal.
And then it's the dentist's office.
Right. Not that that means this wouldn't matter, but, you know, it's not a house.
We did this here, to the board, with the area years ago.
I remember years ago, you guys did something else there, and we were trying to figure out the layout, because you didn't have a, this plan like you have today. So I don't think you noticed it last time, but.
Yep.
All right.
Liz?
All right. I'm gonna go forth. Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed this project, and the applicants, Joanne and Gary Morgan, are proposing to develop a village mixed-use development from an existing commercial building by converting the existing second floor to a residential dwelling. The property is located at 8 Waterhouse Road, MAP 24.3, parcel 53. The project is located in a village business district, and it is in allowed use under section 2220. Mr. Chairman, based on the Planning Board's review of the exhibits, testimony of the applicants, experts, witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the Planning Board has found that the project is consistent with the Town of Bourne zoning law, bylaw, section 1230, site plan review, section 1331, special permit criteria, and section 4250, village mixed-use development. Special permit number 132025 meets the criteria for a special permit of the following. Pedestrian and vehicular flow and safety have been met. The utilities and other public services are adequate. There are no impacted areas to the natural environment. The mixed-use development will be located within the existing structure. Existing visual impacts remain the same. The project is not located within a water resource district. There is a positive impact upon the town's need for year-round housing. Therefore, I move to approve site plan, special permit number 132025, in accordance with the following findings, terms, and conditions. Findings, the building is currently occupied by a 933 square foot hair and nail salon known as Mamas and Papas. The first floor use will not change with the proposed plan. The proposed project complies with all requirements of section 4250, village mixed-use development. Waiver, the Planning Board grants a waiver for the loading area requirements under section 1238B2F. Conditions, this plan is subject to all rules, regulations, and bylaws of the Town of Bourne. Two, coordinating with public safety officials as to the numbering and or lettering of the buildings to assist with 9/11 emergencies. Three, defer to the health, fire, conservation departments, and the Bourne Water District for final determination of compliance for sewerage, excuse me, emergency access, vehicle turnaround, conservation, and adequate water supply. Four, designated parking for the residential unit with a sign stating parking reserved for residents. Five, this decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of deeds slash Land Court Registry, and a copy returned to the Planning Department prior to the issuance of a building permit.
I'll second that. Second by Jim. Any questions or comments from the board? Any further questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, close the hearing, and take a roll call vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Dan, Corinne, and the chair votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We can rehearse that next week.
It's a cute building.
You get your nails done.
Yeah.
No, that's not happening.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. And take off.
I'm accusing myself from this. Next.
All right.
I wasn't in physically today, guys.
It's okay.
It's all right.
We still love you.
So I decided to run away and ran down Harria. It was scary.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I think all parents would have at least one incident like that.
Won't be the last time he runs away.
Yeah.
He's okay.
Gonna train him.
That's why I'm out there. Sorry.
It's okay.
It's okay.
All right. So now, as vice chair, I'm going to take over consideration for the last agenda item, which is application site plan review number 516 for 10 Harrison Avenue. Is this you as well?
It is.
Application is to construct a four-unit residential townhouse building. This property is located in the downtown core district.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Robert DeWarre here with Bracket Engineering on behalf of James and Patricia Casey, the owners and applicants for the proposed townhouse development here at a property known as 10 Harrison Ave. Just a little history on the property. It was previously a part of the budding parcel, which is 8 Harrison Ave. It contained a single-bankway home, sort of a U-shaped driveway, as well as a PTAC garage. The parcel was
at a property known as Ten Harrison Ave. Just a little history on the property. It was previously a part of the Butting Parcel, which is Eight Harrison Ave. It contained a single-family home, sort of a U-shaped driveway, as well as a detached garage. The parcel was subdivided, leaving Eight Harrison Ave separate, and creating a new parcel to be known as Ten Harrison Ave, which still maintained a portion of the driveway as well as the detached garage. The proposed project would be to raise the garage and the driveway and construct a four-unit townhouse development. These would be market rate units for purchase, hopefully providing some assistance towards housing density in the downtown Core District. The, one of the curious or problematic things with the downtown area of Born is that it's all within the flood zone, so as such, we are proposing the first floors of these units to be garage and kind of storage areas, not habitable space. The habitable space starts on the second floor and continues to the third floor to get out of the flood zone, which A is sixteen. The project was reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission at the last hearing. Unfortunately, we actually did not have a DEP number provided by the state, so the hearing technically has not closed yet. However, there were no issues or concerns raised by the commission for this. The proposed units, they're going to be serviced by Buzzards Bay Water District, Town Water, as well as the Buzzards Bay Sewer. They will be connected to the sewer system. Both have been granted allocations for both water and sewer. For electric, there's existing poles along the street, though. The electric will be brought in underground from a pole that's right here on the corner. We have a utility plan that we can review in more detail if needed. For, it's a very small lot, but we do, are still trying to maintain all of our landscape buffers, providing landscaping along the street, and as well keeping up our features for, you know, landscaped or vegetated buffers along the rear and the sides. We do require just a little bit, I'm just gonna swap my plans here in just a minute. We do require a small amount of clearing, and this was actually reviewed at the Design Review Commission committee, and we actually propose probably a revision to this because we did have some small drainage swales along the back of the property. While the development is small enough, we don't have to provide a stormwater report and meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Act. We do still want to provide some stormwater management for the property, and not with the development of this, we don't want to send any additional runoff to the neighbors. The grade naturally flows gently, but flows towards the abiding property. So we did have some swales here along this back edge to contain that and allow some infiltration, but it does seem like we can provide this swell and just sort of create a low point in what would be the lawn area and disturbed area anyway, without impacting the existing vegetation within the fifteen-foot buffer here on the northern side. On the southern side, we probably still need to go into a clear so we can grade within the vegetated buffer. That area will be allowed to just renaturalize. It'll be seeded at first, but allowed to renaturalize the fifteen-foot buffer will come. It'll be created as like a mow line, so we won't mow any further back from that and just allow the natural vegetation to regrow. Additionally, stormwater from the roof areas will be collected, and there's two subsurface infiltration areas that they can be infiltrated to provide some groundwater recharge for the impervious roof areas. About it for utilities, just go through here. I just want to address a few notes that we have discovered or discussed at the DRC. There were some comments to adjust our tree sizing from, we had the minimum three-inch caliper, but to upgrade that to the more, you know, just for the purchasing of it, for the three to three-and-a-half inch caliper, we can certainly do that. During the review process, it was determined that potentially a special permit would be needed because we are at an eighteen-foot setback to the road from the building. Did talk to our clients, and in order to prevent that, what we'd like to propose is that there is a proposed small, four plants here real quick. The front has a small visor roof just to cover over the opening. We would like to propose that that actually be created and expanded slightly and bumped out about five feet, which would allow, bring the structure to the fifteen-foot setback, and we can certainly provide updated plans, you know, prior to acquiring the ready building permit for that. In terms of, so that would meet the fifteen-foot maximum front yard setback in that regard. In terms of lighting for the property, the lighting is minimal, it's, you know, it's really, we're going for a residential, you know, aesthetic here, so there's, we really have not much lighting under the visor roots or the porch. There would be some just recessed overhead lights, just can lights, and then over the deck entrances, we just have the small gooseneck lighting, just to project down and make sure that we're not, you know, projecting off the lot. These would be about three thousand K spectrum lights, inaccessible just from switches. They wouldn't be on a timer, much like a normal residence. They would just be turned off and on as needed. For landscaping in the front, we are proposing eight honey locust trees interspersed with rhododendron shrubs along the street. We do have some boxwoods in between the driveway and some additional shrubs, black-eyed Susans and hydrangeas along the walkways here. There's a utility closet on the south end that will also be screened with arborvitae. Yeah, I'm sure that there are some questions, so I guess we'll get into them.
Parking.
Parking? So each space?
Garage, we got garage under, but.
Exactly, so each unit has two spaces. We have one spot within the garage underneath, and then there's enough space to meet the minimum parking requirements for dimensional requirements in the driveway at each.
Just Harrison Ave is narrow. It's not conducive for on-street parking, and I can just foresee that this will develop into on-street parking in front of these units, whether it be a visitor or people have two, and one of them doesn't feel like pulling in the garage because they got a pool table set up in there, and so they park in the driveway, and now the other car has to park on the street. I think that's gonna be an issue.
Yeah. There is parking, you know, there's quite a bit of on-street parking on Main Street. That's very close by, that there is additional parking requirements.
People are lazy. They don't want to walk.
Might require some signage.
Yeah, maybe some signage on the street for no parking on the street, but that won't be enforced, so might put it off.
We should have a way to find them.
If it's in the language, if it's in the language that there's a sign there, and somebody parks, and gets a ticket, it's on them.
You're not gonna get a ticket.
Is it a deal killer for you? You know?
It's just, it's something that we should say that we talked about, because as the neighbors complain or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Dan?
Do you think signage is justified? Go ahead.
Yeah, with the sign, no parking, that's a town road. He can't, he can't put up a street sign.
He can't put it up.
So he had to petition it through the Board, through the Board of Selectmen, so all we can do is ask.
We can ask them, yep.
We can ask as a condition, correct? That he petitions the Board of Selectmen and say, no street parking.
Basically, it's kind of there, but I think they should do that. I think that's a great idea.
We can't mandate it, we can only ask it to, because we, it's out of our purview.
Just, plus, this particular section of Harrison Ave, there's a sweeping curve there. There's the boatyard that accesses there, and if you have parking on the street there, it's inviting a problem. So I think that's a great idea that they request from the Board of Selectmen or whatever, have it posted, no parking on the street.
But again, we can only ask them, petition.
Yep.
They're lazy, but they do have that alternative.
Right.
Yeah.
Other than that, I'm glad to see some housing going on.
You've addressed pretty much and very well the concerns of DRC. I think that grading is a great move. I think, you know, there's a lot of undistinguished vegetation in the buffer, but there are a few nice trees there, and so thank you for that.
Can I ask an uninformed question about the eighteen versus the fifteen-foot setback and the proposed solution? Are you gonna end up with a really ugly-looking, I don't know enough about this architecturally speaking, but you're gonna have this big thing sticking out? Is that setback, is that three feet critically important, or could we waive it?
Can't waive it.
Can't waive it.
Well.
Was dimensional.
Right, you can't waive it under a site plan, you could do it under a special permit.
Okay, okay.
So I have a question. Did we not just do something similar to that where the A six building was? Because he brought up the awning.
He brought the porch out. Porch out, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's what they're proposing.
Is this gonna be a porch now?
Correct, yeah, it'll be a porch, yeah.
Okay, I just, you know, occasionally you see buildings that just look strange and you wonder why, and.
I don't think it'd be awkward.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. As long as you all can visualize it, I just wasn't sure.
Liz, so it's not the farmer's porch?
It'll be something similar, it'll be sort of essentially wider than this porch, but something very similar to that, where they probably have a full rail.
That's fine, I'm sure it's fine. I just wanted to ask, Corinne, did you have something?
Yeah, we were just discussing the parking, and I was just looking at the site plan, and I know they've been to design review, and they have to go back to, I saw that as a notation in here.
We wanted to come back for the lighting and the siding, and you did come back.
Correct, yep.
Tuesday with the siding and so on, and it was not considered a problem.
I'm just, you know, I think we need to talk about the parking a little bit more. I know there's a side area there that has some proposed trees, it's probably a green area, but if parking is an issue, sight lines are an issue, the roads narrow, what's more important, the trees that were gonna be planted, or should they put two spaces over there just for overflow company? Because, you know, they're gonna have two cars, more than likely two people are gonna live there that have cars. They have a visitor that comes in. It's gonna, it's gonna become an issue with the neighbors if they can't get by, it's too narrow, so should, you know, even if we put just two spaces over there or something, it just seems like we should be.
I'd prefer to keep the street trees and enforce our.
Yeah, but the neighbors are the ones that have to live with that, with the cars going by and the street being narrow, so you have pretty trees, but then you got aggravated people.
I guess, I.
I'm more concerned with that particular section of Harrison Ave because it is on a sweeping curve for, you have somebody parking on the street, an emergency vehicle has to get through there, it's gonna be tight.
That's what I'm thinking, we should get the cars off the road.
It's a pretty sharp curve, and there's.
Yeah, it is.
Other traffic in that area, so I would, I don't know.
I mean, you could put one on one side and one on the other side, at least to provide some off-street parking.
Do they own the property next door, too?
It's subdivided up. I do not know if it has been sold yet. I believe it has.
Okay, so it's gonna be sold? It wouldn't be an option to?
Yeah, no, actually, I do know that it has been sold. The other parcel has been sold, it's not really an option.
I think you've got a drainage structure on the north side.
Yeah, there would be, yeah, there is a drainage structure here. I mean, that can be designed to withstand some parking. I would be hesitant, one of the issues with providing just maybe two spaces is that it's four units to be sold individually, so which units get the extra spaces, or how does that, from a practical standpoint, how does that kind of work out? So, I mean, we do meet the minimum required parking for the residential units in per the bylaw. I mean, again, Main Street is a two-minute walk away, if that, I understand it is a narrow street, but the other thing with providing off-street parking beyond the driveway here is just creating additional curb cuts, you know, off of the streets that we're requesting four curb cuts. Well, there's one curb cut there now, but requesting three additional curb cuts as part of the project, creating two more.
I just foresee this being a problem because they're gonna be for sale, so the people that are probably gonna buy those are not here tonight. So they're gonna buy this, they're not gonna, they don't hear this discussion, so it's gonna be an enforcement issue. Then they buy it, then they rent it out, then it becomes another issue because the renters don't know, so it's just gonna be something that's gonna, so if we can resolve it now, it makes, you know, do something about it now, I think it's, this is the time to do it, instead of.
Yeah, I mean, we're more than amenable to petition the Select Board to put signage on the street in the state of no parking.
Dan?
It meets the requirement of the zoning bylaw, correct?
It does, yep.
Thank you.
Like I said before, we mentioned it, and it's been brought out, but it's.
All we can ask is, we could, with the Board of Selectmen, petition the Board of Selectmen that no street parking.
And the people will become, they'll get to know the area, and if they need more parking than what is available in the area, they'll figure something out, whether it's walking up to Main Street or talking to somebody in the area and making arrangements, so it meets the bylaw.
Any other discussion on the board? All right, any comments from the audience?
I would like to speak.
Just state your name and where you live, please.
I'm a concerned resident. I live on Harrison Ave.
And your name?
Mr. Maderos.
Okay.
Harrison Ave is a very small neighborhood. Harrison Ave is a very quiet neighborhood. In Harrison Ave is a very peaceful neighborhood, and we cannot allow that to be upended by building four townhouses just mere feet from our doorsteps. We do not need the added foot traffic. We do not need the added automobile traffic. We do not need the added noise pollution, crime, and drugs associated with building four townhouses in a small, quiet, peaceful neighborhood. The road is too narrow, there is no room to park on the street. We cannot allow here today, gone tomorrow, people that are just trying to make a quick buck decide the fate of the people that live here. We live in a so-called democracy. Let the people that actually live in the neighborhood vote, and let the will of the people reign supreme. Everyone I have spoken to in the neighborhood does not want this. Let me be clear, I have no problem with a single-family home being built on this site.
Sir, could you not, could you not shout at us, just speak normally? Thank you.
Well, I'm upset about this.
That's fine, but, you know, you don't need to do that. Thank you.
Let me be clear, I have no problem with a single-family home being built on this site, but a four-unit townhouse is a bridge too far. To James and Patricia Casey, this is probably just a money grab for you, and we will probably never even see you in our neighborhood, but if you do decide to come, you won't feel welcome. No one is gonna roll out the welcome wagon for you. No one is gonna bake you a pie and welcome you to our neighborhood, and to the planning board. You wouldn't allow this monstrosity to be built in your neighborhoods, so I ask you not to allow this monstrosity to be built in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to come up and talk? From the audience?
Tell him he's got to.
Keep it to two minutes, please. Okay? It's fine, it's a long time.
I just wanted to say, Paul, thank you for listening, and I agree with every word that man just said, and that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the reviewer.
Anyone else? Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, based on the Planning Board review and the exhibits and testimony, the applicant expert witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the Planning Board has found that the project is consistent with the Town of Born zoning bylaw twelve thirty, site plan review twenty-eight hundred downtown district, all applicable sections, section twenty-eight forty Performance and Functional Standards, thirty, section thirty-one hundred Lowland Regulations, section thirty-four fifty Lighting and Section Five Definitions. Therefore, I move to approve Site Plan Review five sixteen in accordance with the following findings, terms, and conditions. Findings: One, on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, eight Harrison Avenue was granted approval to subdivide the property into two lots, creating ten Harrison Avenue. The site has two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-point-one-three-feet of frontage and an existing curb cut for the garage and shed, which are proposed to be demolished. The extension of the alteration will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood than it is in existing non-conforming use. Two, the redevelopment of the plan proposes the construction of four-unit townhouses, buildings, and associated site improvements. Each unit is proposed to have its own driveway and curb cut. Stormwater runoff from the roof shall be infiltrated through sub-surface structures, and the overall site design promotes low-impact mitigation of stormwater through vegetated swales and minimized impervious area. The Planning Board grants the waiver for the loading area requirements under section twelve thirty-eight B two F. The Planning Board grants relief for the parking areas for the following: Parking not located within the second and third lot layers is illustrated in the figure DT two, section twenty-eight fifty, and direct vehicular access from the street garage and carport entrances are closer to the street property line than any other portion of the front facade of the building, section twenty-eight twenty-one. Parking lots shall be masked from the frontage by the buildings and appropriate landscaping is specified in section twenty-eight sixty. Parking areas are not arranged so that the vehicles are not required to back from such facilities directly onto the public streets, section twenty-eight fifty, with the conditions of: One, the plan is subject to all rules and regulations of the bylaws of the Town of Born. Two, provide the following to the Planning Department for the Planning Board representatives' approval prior to obtaining a building permit: A, the lighting plan, and B, landscape plan showing vegetate, revegetation of landscape buffer. Three, coordinate with public safety officials to the numbering or end or lettering of the buildings to assist with nine-one-one emergencies. Four, to defer to the health, fire, conservation departments, and the Born Water District for final determination of compliance for sewage emergency access, vehicle turnaround, conservation, and adequate water supply. Five, stake the limit of the disturbed work area before construction and maintain throughout construction. Six, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, an as-built plan must be submitted to the Planning Board showing all appurtenances above and below ground. Seven, this decision shall be recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds/Land Court Registry, and a copy returned to the Planning Department prior to the issuance of a billing permit. Eight, submitted, amended plan showing the porch, it must have one member of the Planning Board, and the planning staff must approve prior to the issuance of a billing permit. And number nine, petition the Board of Selection, Board of Selectmen for a "No Parking on Street" signs.
I'll second that.
What about the-
All right, anymore?
Madam Chair, what about the expanding the front?
He just-
I did.
Oh, you said it? Okay, okay.
Any more discussion on the motion? Anyone? All right, gonna vote. Roll call vote, Amanda?
Yes.
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
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 No.
No. Chair voted yes, but, all right.
I just like preface my vote. I think that I'm all for multifamily housing, but I think if we have a chance to fix the parking, we should do that. I think we're letting them back out. That's just the only reason I did. I'm all for multifamily housing, adding stock, but I'm just concerned about the parking.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. We obviously all had some concerns.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you.
Aye.
Yeah, can I just get aye? Amanda?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone else, aye?
Everybody else, yes. So with a fee.